Call to order, the committee of a whole meeting of the president and board of trustees, roll call.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rasch.
Here.
Trustee Wajowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. If we could rise for the pledge, please.
[inaudible]
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop in the executive session held on September 14th.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries presidential comments.
Well, as you can see, we have quite a crowd out here in the audience today, and we're real appreciative. We have the second grade from Lincoln Elementary School. Now, this is the same group of children that Mrs. Benucci and I visited last week, and we really want to thank you for coming this evening, and it's really a pleasure to hear all your sweet voices say the pledge, too. It sounded wonderful. I, for one, would also like to thank, we received a book with comments, we haven't had a chance to look at much of it, but we will certainly read it, and I want to thank all the children that wrote one, a page in this book, so thank you very much. Mrs. Benucci, do you have?
I, too, want to thank you for my book. I treasure these, and we hope you come back off and you can come to a meeting anytime, you know, your parents are able to bring you, and we'd love to have you so you learn more about the process, so thank you all very much.
And I know you're all working on government right now, so this is, the closest thing to government for your families is our village board, so, again, thank you very much for coming. That's all I have.
Trustees' comments?
I'd comment on the parade, particularly the cleanup afterwards. The parade wasn't as busy as it had been some times to pass despite the beautiful day that we had, but the cleanup afterwards is extremely efficient. The barricades were hauled away, and forklifts, and the tape disappeared, I don't know where the tape went, you know, within an hour, less than an hour after the parade was over, it was mostly cleaned up. You had the street sweeper going, so, great job, and, you know, getting us back to normal very quickly, but a great parade, too. I think it was enjoyed by those who were there, at any rate.
Just like to reiterate on that point as well, it was my first homecoming parade, and I had a, I had a lot of fun out there, so I want to just say thanks to everybody who was instrumental in putting it together, and all the people that came out to support it. It was fun. Thank you.
Also, thank you to everybody who worked the 5K. I think it was a rather successful event. The weather was nice and cool for everybody that was running, and it was a good time had by all.
You know, recently, in an article in the Joliet Herald News, Bob Odeclerk, the mayor, said what we need in downtown Joliet is more police and more activities. He's a good man, I'm not criticizing him, I'm only reiterating the thing is, that not all communities are Plainfield. There are an awful lot of communities that suffer, and I'm telling you how they suffer. They suffer with inactivity, absence of people on streets, et cetera, et cetera. I was just thinking about this afternoon, thinking about the activities in the village of Plainfield. If someone says nothing's ever happening here, well, let me tell you something. Every Tuesday night in the summertime for three straight months, we have the car show. The library, none of these are in chronological order. The library has a myriad of activities for children, adults, et cetera. We got the farmer's market, we got the three-day Plainfield Fest. St. Mary's recently had an October Fest in their parking lot. We had homecoming, which was mentioned by a number of trustees already, with literally thousands of people participating and watching and showing the spirit of Plainfield. We had the 5K race, and the 1K Children's Race Walk, et cetera. The Plainfield Area Chamber of Commerce had it this weekend with 1,300 participants. We had a big activity this past spring called the Big Serve with literally hundreds of people participating in Plainfield. We had the Village of Plainfield End Hunger Campaign, and the Postman's End Hunger Campaign. In addition, Memorial Day activities, Fourth of July activities, Riverfest activities, St. Patty's Parade, on and on and on. So when you're looking for something to do, come to Plainfield, because not only will it be a fun activity, it'll primarily be a family activity, and it'll be a safe activity, because we, through our services, know how to do it. And I'm really proud to be here, and I'm really proud of the individuals who take care of the people in the village of Plainfield. Give them something more than just a place to say, this is where I hang my hat. Thank you.
That was an amazing list. I have to add, though, every Monday night at 7:00 PM, village hall.
Best entertainment in town, right?
Who is more fun than us? Are there any other trustee comments? Now, this would be time for public comments. There are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is the five-year capital plan.
Thank you very much. I think I'll start this off here. This is actually the first night, the first meeting that we're going to be discussing the village's budget for next year. So, a little unlike Springfield, we're starting ahead, and in the 25 years that I've been here, we've never failed to adopt a budget before May 1st. So, this is the first meeting that we're having. We like to start with capital improvements, because we get to talk about some of the big picture, more long-term things, a five-year plan, and things like that, that are important to the community, and it gives the board and the mayor time to digest, and the public to digest, the plan for the next year and add input. The plan was put together based on feedback related to the strategic plan that the village board has been involved in for the past several years, many years, and also the transportation plan that was adopted by the board a year and a half ago, too, as well. So, that's the basis behind the five-year plan, and the capital improvements plan, too, as well. If we're not able to answer everyone's questions tonight, or take all the comments tonight, we do have the strategic planning session coming up this Saturday, and I'm sure the transportation and pedestrian improvements will be discussed at that meeting, too, as well. So, we see this as a kickoff to an ongoing discussion, so we're going to cover at a high level several different projects. All of the members here are going to have their opportunities to speak briefly about the projects, and then at the end, we have the overall spreadsheet that we're just going to open it up for questions and comments by the mayor and the board. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tara Orban from Baxter and Woodman. She's going to talk about two of the really important projects that we have going on within the community, and then Mr. Justin and Mr. Threwit will also be speaking as well. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and village trustees. It's good to be here with you tonight. The first project we'd like to give an overview for is the 127th Street Reconstruction. The project limits on this improvement are from Heggs Road to the Tuttle Estates subdivision. The scope of work is to reconstruct that two-lane rural section and provide the village standard, which is a three-lane urban section with curb and gutter and storm sewer. We're also going to provide a bike path from Heggs Road to connect all the way to the bike path that exists at the Tuttle Estates subdivision. The project itself will be removing those narrow shoulders and steep side slopes, especially on that south side of 127th Street. The project itself has $2 million in federal funding. Several months ago, we went to IDOT and met with District One staff, as well as the Federal Highway Administration, and we obtained concurrence on our scope, our termini, and our environmental processing. The public meeting for this project will be happening sometime in the month of November, and we anticipate the project to be out for bid sometime next year, with construction starting into 2016 construction season. The next improvement is the Renwick Road reconstruction. This project is also similar in scope to the 127th Street improvements. We have a two-lane rural section. We're going to be reconstructing the roadway, picking up where the township left off east of the river, and going over to the Spangler Farm subdivision. There's a lot more players with this project, because we have the Plainfield Park District, as well as the Plainfield Township Highway Department, so this fall will be a milestone for us as we, as we coordinate with them on these improvements. This project itself also is receiving just shy of $1.5 million in federal funding, and this project is scheduled in the latter part of the village's capital improvement program, primarily because this is in such close proximity to the Route 30 reconstruction project, and we want this to follow up far on the heels of that improvement, which I believe is scheduled to be completed in 2017.
The first project I want to talk about is the Route 30, 143rd Street intersection improvement. Engineering on that project is essentially complete. Staff, we're in conversations with IDOT right now, as it relates to right-of-way acquisition and a cost-sharing agreement with IDOT. That project, again, will take the temporary signals down that are out there, and put the permanent signals, street lighting, pedestrian improvements, and geometric improvements for turning movements by semis and the like. The next project is 127th Street and Plainfield Naperville Road. That project as well, the engineering is essentially done. We are also in conversation with the village of Bullingbrook and Will County. They control two legs of that intersection, and we are to appoint, to try and program that project to coincide with the other two entities, as far as how their budget works out, again, to their cost-sharing aspects of that project. It will put a four-way stop, a four-way signal at that intersection. There'll be some pedestrian improvements, and also improvements for turning movements at that location. Next project's a rather large project. It's the 143rd Street Extension from 59 over to 126. Just before, around Christmas last year, we finally got the Phase 1 approval from IDOT, which is allowing us to move forward into the Phase 2, which actually is the nuts and bolts design work for that project. This project has a $2 million grant associated with it from the Will County Governmental League. We are in conversation with ComEd right now to actually define the final alignment of the roadways that goes through their right-of-way. And, that's all I got for that project. The next project is the Lockport Street Bypass. We had recently completed a feasibility study this summer, and through that, the preferred alternative turned out to be 1A, which will have the least impact to the park district and Vulcan Materials, and will be kind of following their access road that they have through that corridor, and will have minimal impacts to, like I said, the wetlands and the park property. All the information in this project has been turned over to V3, and with the next slide, that'll be, as it relates to the I-55 interchange project. That just gave V3 and our group a little bit change in direction, once they saw the feasibility study to include the bypass in that study. So, V3 now is, is in the process of incorporating all the information. We had transferred it from one consultant to them, and back in July, we had a NEPA 404 meeting up in Chicago, where this I-55 project received concurrence from all the federal EPA, Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, so that project cleared another milestone, and will be moving forward in the near future. Currently, there was two alternatives for the Lockport Airport Road location, and three alternatives for the 126 location.
Mr. Justin.
Yes?
Mayor Collins?
As grandparents, and I'm a former teacher, I know kids need their rest, and I, you know, if any of the parents feel that they should take their children home, or continue listening to the meeting, please feel to do so, but if you feel that you have to go home, the kids need some extra rest, or do some homework, please feel free to leave. No one would hold it against you, and you won't be graded.
Before we go on to the, you're done with the road improvements, sir?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Before we move on to the bicycle, I think we have some comments about intersection improvements, turn lanes, and such like this, and I believe Mr. O'Rourke had a couple of questions, maybe might, the time might be now to ask your questions.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I guess I was hoping for a little bit more than questions. I was hoping maybe that the village administrator was going to put a little bit more into it, and maybe have it actually as an agenda item, and have some more data to actually discuss. But, my topic for discussion before was talking about the possibility, or the feasibility, of maybe adding right turn lanes to key intersections to allow more traffic to get through during each cycle, because a number of our traffic, or a number of our intersections back up to a point where people are waiting at peak times, sometimes three or four lights to get through. Some people are doing illegal activities to avoid those types of scenarios, and I think it's just causing a lot of frustration for our local drivers. The second piece that I wanted to bring up to see maybe if we could look at maybe funding in the future as well, is just timing of streetlights. I don't know if there's ever been a comprehensive study, or even individual studies with different intersections, as far as the timing of those lights. In other words, are there different timings for peak periods? Because sometimes I pull up to a light, and it's backed up, 135th and Route 59, example, heading west, in front of Myers over there. It'll be backed up to the fire station, and yet, when the light is green on 59, there'll be no cars coming through, when everybody else is waiting two or three lights to get through. So, it just seems to me, just as a local observation, as a driver, that maybe adjusting the timing, something simple as that, might have a positive effect. In other words, if there's no cars coming through on 59, and people are waiting on the other road, maybe we shut down 59 five seconds earlier, seven seconds, whatever the timing is. I'm not a traffic expert, but certainly something I thought maybe we could at least look at, or at least have some discussion on.
Yeah, I could talk to that. The first point about the turn lanes, back when Route 59 was reconstructed, about 12, 15 years ago, I believe it was, at that time, the only commercial development was at, I think, 135th Street, and they only had planned to put in traffic signals at that particular location, but the village had coordinated with IDOT, stressed the importance of 127th Street, 119th Street, and those signals were installed at that time, even though they really didn't meet the warrants. And, since they really didn't meet the warrants, the turn lanes at that time were constructed as well. Now, that being said, we have, in the past few years, attempted to get ITEP grants for pedestrian improvements up and down Route 59, to basically create a sidewalk from Naperville down to, towards Joliet. And, in that study, those would have, if we were awarded the ITEP grant, we would have been looking at each intersection to do the warrant study. That would also address any turn lanes and any pedestrian improvements to get across 59 to the growing commercial on the east side of the road. So, that's kind of a little bit about the turn lanes. Now, we will be looking next year, in the upcoming budget, at 135th Street, the start of Phase 1 study, to put a pedestrian crossing there. At that time, we would be evaluating, you know, the warrants for a turn.
Do the turn lanes have to be associated with the pedestrian crossings, or can you do them?
No. It's the warrants, how much traffic is moving through that intersection, and any particular backups it make, or, you know, to, you know, unforeseen delays.
Because I know another one where people have expressed frustration, is 127th and Route 30, heading eastbound, because I know the reason for that is, is because of the train. So, you have the special long, light, green lights coming westbound, and shorter going eastbound, and it creates that backup because of the train safety issue.
Right. That signal is interconnected with the, the stoparms on the track, so it knows well in advance of, you know, when the train's coming through, that'll turn that intersection red. So, that will kind of throw off the timing a little bit, depending on when the trains come through town, but that was a safety feature. We had looked at an option when we reconstructed, because we actually reconstructed that intersection of moving Route 30 away from the tracks, but the cost-benefit analysis didn't warrant, wasn't, it wasn't worth it at that time.
No, and I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, that might be one of the key intersections to look at, adding a right turn lane, eastbound 127th Street and Route 30.
Okay.
It's because of that timing of the light creates such a backup at peak hours, that people are getting frustrated, and, you know, pulling in front of other cars, going in the left lane, and turning right out of the left lane.
Understand that.
Things like that, or running red lights, because there's, you know, there's not a camera. All those issues, I think that just frustrate people as they're starting their commute or ending their commute in town, that's all. So, I don't know how the other board members feel about these items, as, as a potential review or inclusion in the capital going forward.
As long as you ask. You know, trustee O'Rourke, your point is totally valid. Simple fact is, you talk about the beginning and the end of a commute. Oftentimes, you see individuals who are frustrated because of a train, because of stoppage, not being able to turn, simply short lights that are not well timed, and what it does is, it dramatically steamrolls and grows into a bigger problem of people cutting through side streets, going through parking lots, doing everything dangerous. So, it really needs to be addressed, and I'm in complete agreement with what you had to say before. Thank you.
I'm also in agreement with trustee O'Rourke over there. And, I live up 127th, so I feel your pain. Every morning, it's backed up. What is the criteria for these pedestrian crossings you're talking about, that you're going to do at 135th? And if it's arbitrary for the village to do it, why don't we do it at the major intersections, 119th and 127th at the same time?
Well, we'll get to that, that's a, that's a slide here coming up, too, as well, for future pedestrian improvements, that IDOT is more open to this than they were in the past. When that section to the north was constructed, there really wasn't a big funding mechanism for multi-use paths and sidewalks and things like that. And you look at the south side of Route 59, has pedestrian accommodations from downtown Lockport Street all the way south to Feeny Frazier, and the north half really lacks that. So, it's one of the things, one of our goals, I think collectively as a community, that we should look at and evaluate, and for a safety benefit for the community. Now, that being said, and we'll take any other comments, too, as well, but since we're talking about a couple of different locations, what I'd really like to do, and I'm going to defer a little bit to the strategic plan coming, coming up this Saturday, is focus on the different areas, and get the input from all the trustees as to what areas we'd like to look at, then get some feedback as far as study, traffic data, numbers, things like that, and then come back to the board with a report related to that, if that's okay with the trustee.
I do have a comment, real quick. When we have a pedestrian crossing, that turns the light signals, it takes like three to five cycles before it's all back to where there's just demand. And so, anytime someone pushes that button, then all of a sudden, the cycles are all goofed up, and it'll take three to five cycles for that to go. And, I would like to also recognize that 127th is not the only street in town that has backup in the, if you go down Lockport Street at 5:00, it's backed up to the railroad tracks.
And I'm not just saying that intersection.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, that's, but that's all our, I mean,
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying.
That's Illinois 59, everything, and we, unless we put a toll on 59, which was suggested numerous times, I don't, I don't think that's going to change at all. It probably is going to even get worse.
But I would, I think it, when I say key intersections, wherever there's an issue, I haven't identified, you know, one, because it's my favorite, I'm just saying, if we could add some each year, and slowly chip away at it, and if it, if it works, then we just keep adding it, and obviously, it becomes a, an item we could move forward with.
Well, no, I totally agree, but the state of Illinois also doesn't have any money, and anything that's not even on their drawing board now is five to six, so many years down the way, before it's even being considered, because they have no money allotted.
And that would go back to my second point, which is light timing. Maybe we can just do something simple in the meantime, is look at the timing of the lights in the morning, or in the evening, or...
Well, these are all timed here. It's on demand rather than timed. I mean, they're, excuse me, they're on demand rather than being timed. As if they're timed, then they, there's, like you said, no cars coming, and you have red lights.
And, and there is some interconnection fiber optic cable between the signals. It's more sophisticated on the south side of the community, and you'll find if it's a normal traffic day, to make it from here to Shorewood or Joliet is so much more efficient than it was before the reconstruction. And part of that's due to the technology. As the mayor states, a pedestrian movement, an emergency vehicle, things like this throw the timing completely off, and then it has to get back in sync. But we'll continue to work with IDOT on the timing, too, as well. But if I can step back for a minute, if we can, at our next meeting, at our strategic planning meeting, come up with a list of intersections that would be a priority, and then we can work towards those intersections, whether it's a partnership with IDOT, the county, other communities, or the township.
Okay, and also, Mr. Heinon's here from Planning and Zoning, and he'd like to make a comment about 127th and 30, so if you'd like to just take the, you have to get up here to the mic, though, and just, you have to turn it on, though, sir, I believe.
Well done. Well, Ms. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate the, the time that I can get in regards to, you know, some of the concerns that the residents have on the, I guess, the west side of the tracks, so Tuttle Estates, Shenandoah, and I recently just moved to Grand Park, and I love Grand Park, but I've come to realize the, the challenges associated with the train traffic. And, I'm not here to talk about the train, I think we hear about the trains all the time, but, you know, at that intersection of 127th and Route 30, I think there may be some potential investigation, where we can help the congestion of that intersection specifically, because what's happening is because of the trains in the morning, and if you look at Route 30 and all those intersections along Route 30 adjacent to the train, the 127th and Route 30 intersection is the closest. I think the next is 135th, but there's still separation from the train and Route 30, where you can start getting some stacking for those cars to, to wait while the train passes. 119th, 111th, we don't have that issue, so specifically, 127th and Route 30 has been a major concern of the residents of this area, because they just can't move when they're, when they're waiting for the trains going eastbound, because there's no right turn lane there. If there was a right turn lane there, then some of that traffic could, could, you know, proceed south on Route 30 while the other cars are waiting to go straight to pass, you know, past the intersection. So, I also did talk to an expert in the intersection science of, you know, railroad right-of-way and intersections, and he said there's a couple of things that you could take a look at. One is, which trustee O'Rourke mentioned, was, you know, the, the, the timing of that signal. You know, I know the signals are timed when the trains actually pass, but maybe there's an opportunity where, you know, after that train passes, instead of that 127th being, you know, a minute long for green, maybe it could be two minutes long, so that we can get the, the rest of the traffic on 127th through, because Route 30 is green the whole time while the trains go by. So, maybe there's opportunities, we can take a look at that. Also, in regards to the right lane improvements, I know there's a lot of infrastructure on the south side of 127th Street with streetlights, water main, storm sewer, that have to be constructed to be able to build that right turn lane, but what, what he told me was that ICC, when they approved the fact that the CN can increase the number of trains going through there, that they had a mitigation fund in regards to doing a study afterwards, so that if the increase of the trains impacted certain intersections, you know, that they have money allocated to do those improvements. And I think a right turn lane at that intersection, 127th and 30, would be a perfect application for that. I don't know if that's true with this scenario or not, but I'd love for the village to investigate that, so that, that way, we can hopefully improve that intersection. And one last thing, in regards to that intersection, I know there's been a lot of discussion about Meadow Lane, and all the, all the traffic going down Meadow Lane, and we put those temporary roundabouts in there to try to slow the traffic. I think if we improve the intersection 127th and Route 30, hopefully, some of that cut-through traffic will be alleviated, because we improved that intersection. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, and this will also be added to Allen's for Conversation Saturday.
We'll turn it over to Mr. Threwit to talk about pedestrian improvements.
Okay, thank you. Before I start with the bicycle and pedestrian improvements, let me just jump back to the eastbound, or the dedicated right turn lanes. As far as the study goes for those dedicated right turn lanes, there are numerical warrants that, that will need to be met, and those are discussed in the IDOT design guidelines, so when we do a traffic study, it'll be, it'll be in black and white, whether we meet the warrants or we don't meet the warrants, as far as justifying that dedicated right turn lane. So, once the study is completed, we will, we will have an answer, whether or not they are, they are warranted, so it won't be a judgment call by either staff or engineering consultant. We will, we'll be able to justify whatever decision we make by, by the actual traffic control. We will be able to justify whatever decision we make by the actual traffic counts. With that, I'm going to start here with the current bicycle and pedestrian improvements the village has ongoing at this time. As Alan had mentioned, many of the improvements we're going to talk about tonight were listed in both the transportation plan and the strategic plan. And both those documents were guided by both residential input and trustee input along the way. So the first project here that we have is up on the screen is the 135th Street pedestrian crossing. This project is being constructed currently. It's been a couple of years in the process securing the necessary permits from the CN and the ICC, but we do have everything in hand now and the contractor is working ahead with this project. This project is funded by both a congestion mitigation grant through the CN, which I believe the resident had mentioned previously, and then also through the Illinois Grade Crossing Protection Fund. The village will complete their portion of this project this year, and then we hope the CN will complete their portion as well, which would be the actual gate arms at the Couple other current projects we have going on. The biggest one on this slide, you know, there's a couple of big ones on here. The major one is the US Route 30 project that'll have sidewalk and a shared use path throughout the whole corridor. That would be from 59 back towards Joliet, near the frontage road near I-55. And then the other project we're doing with IDOT is a joint project at Meadow Lane and Lockport Street or 126. That'll be signalization of that intersection along with pedestrian improvements, ADA upgrades, and a fiber interconnect between the signals at Wallen and Droughton Road. That project is roughly $800,000 and that's being funded predominantly by IDOT. Couple of the, we'll say, smaller projects that we currently have ongoing are the 127th Street connection at 248th Street. That's right near Edwards and that's an important connection up north to Plainfield, Plainfield North High School. And we also have Feeny Drive, which would be east of Route 59. We'll be making a connection to that signal with the existing sidewalk to improve connectivity there for the pedestrian network. And then we're also going to be completing sidewalk improvements near the Dayfield, we'll say, medical campus along Route 59. So those are the ones we currently are completing at the moment. The next slide here is ones we're going to be concentrating on in the future. We have the conversion of Norman Town Road north of 119th Street into a trail that's being done in conjunction with both the park district and the township. And we have a couple sidewalk connectivity projects. One is at Fort Beggs and the other one is at Frazier Road. Those would be bringing sidewalk up to Route 59 where we do have pedestrian accommodations currently. And then we had touched upon this project earlier. This would be the improving the pedestrian accommodations at 135th Street and Route 59. Staff feels that that's the intersection that currently sees the most pedestrian traffic and that's one we would want to concentrate on first. And then from there, we would look at 119th and 127th Street as well, as far as improving the pedestrian accommodations at those intersections. And then lastly, the Harvest Glen subdivision, which is on the west side of Route 30, just south of 135th Street with the increase in commercial development along Route 30 near 135th Street. We've seen an uptick in the pedestrian activity in that corridor, so we'd like to complete a sidewalk connection along Route 30 to improve safety there. Moving on from the bicycle and pedestrian projects, we have our annual striping program. This is refreshing pavement markings throughout the village. Really, most importantly, we concentrate on areas near schools and make sure those are refreshed. This is an annual program that's evaluated yearly by staff as far as if there's areas that are deteriorating faster than others.
Question for this one and the next one, both multi-year contract, saving us money. The striping one, well, it's a matter of what needs to be done. What's being fixed in the multi-year contract? Per unit length or the total quantity? Is it a fixed price contract or what is a multi-year?
For the pavement marking contract, we get a unit price depending on, a unit price for each item in the contract. And the contract items would be four inch wide stripe, 12 inch wide stripe. So we get a, we estimate a linear footage of striping and we get a unit price for, per foot generally for that work.
We're paying a fixed price for how many years?
For two years. Yeah, we have a, basically have a locked-in price for two years. And the next slide here with our crack filling program is the same way.
Now, before you continue, I have a question that goes along these lines. It kind of goes hand in hand with trustee O'Rourke's question earlier. Plainfield-Naperville Road near Nabbies, totally worn off. There's two problems there. One, if you don't pull up far enough, the light doesn't change. Roger actually had to get out of the car and tell somebody to pull up because the light doesn't change because it doesn't trigger the signal. And then that's a great spot to make, to draw on the right turn at that point if possible, only because, or just identify two lanes because people pull up and they sit right in the middle and then you have the whole backup, especially with the traffic and the trains and all that. Is that possible and can that be added in or?
Regarding the pavement with a right turn lane there, we have, we have one out there, we've measured the width of the pavement out there and currently there isn't enough room to get in a, what would be a standard dedicated right turn lane. It's not, it's not to be said it can't be done. It's something we can investigate as far as actually widening that intersection to actually allow for a dedicated right turn lane. And with, as you know, the detector loops are in the pavement out there, so witnesses firsthand where you have to have somebody, you know, you have to tell somebody to move up out there. There are signs, which I'm sure most people have seen, that say, "Stop here on red," and an arrow pointing down. And that actually gives motorists a visual clue that they need to pull up for the, to get the light to trigger. That's something we can certainly look at. The next annual program that the village here is the crack filling program. This is a maintenance-type program that extends the life of existing asphalt pavement. It's basically just a fiber reinforced asphalt that gets applied over the existing cracks and seals them so that water doesn't infiltrate in the future and prevents the freeze-thaw cycle, which will extend the life of the pavement. And this is also a multi-year program. Additionally, the village has an annual ADA sidewalk curb and curb removal and replacement program. We've identified intersections in the village that are lacking in ADA compliance, so we have been working proactively to upgrade those intersections. We do have a lot in the village and we identify a certain amount per year and get those completed. It should be noted as part of our street resurfacing program where we resurface streets, we also do upgrade the ADA accommodations there too.
Could you also, Scott, they have, some of these intersections or sidewalks, excuse me, have been stopped, taken out, and then grassed. Now, could you speak to that?
Yeah, we, that happens somewhat frequently when we're resurfacing subdivisions and we will come to an intersection that has crosswalks on all sides. Sometimes those, when those crosswalks were installed, they were installed properly at the time for what the code required. Codes have changed over time and sometimes we have crosswalks that terminate at a driveway opposite an intersection and that's something that isn't really, isn't allowed anymore. Or they'll, or the, the crosswalk will terminate a curb and doesn't have another sidewalk on the other side to continue. So in those cases, we would either relocate, relocate the crosswalk or actually remove it. And that's been our policy for the last few years here. And that, and that policy matches what's in the ADA, our ADA transition plan that was updated earlier this year.
I'm sorry, Scott, for the benefit of people, I guess, that are listening, the other part of our current program, if I understand it correctly, is if there's damaged curbs or trip hazards as part of the existing sidewalks, that they should contact Public Works as far as, and having you guys come out, take a look to see if it's, if it is an option to either be fixed or indoor replaced?
Yes, we have, it falls under two different programs. We have an ADA program which generally addresses ramps. And then we have a trip hazard removal program that'll, that'll address the issues you speak of where people have an uneven sidewalk in front of their house. And those concerns can be directed to Public Works. We create a work order from that and one of our inspectors will go out there, evaluate, evaluate the trip hazard. If it's a significant trip hazard, we will do an immediate corrective action, which would be a temporary ramp out there, either out of asphalt or we have a composite cement-type material we can do a temporary ramp with. And then when our, and when our contract is approved for that program, we would actually go out there and do the sidewalk removal and replacement and remove those panels and replace them with panels at our level.
Thank you.
That's, that's how we've done it in the past. This past year, we were lucky enough to have four summer interns in the engineering department and they were tasked with canvassing the village here, looking for trip hazards and also documenting, documenting our ADA compliance at the intersection. So they got about a third through the village, so we do have a running list of just streets that they've canvassed and noted trip hazards on, in addition to the ones that residents call in.
Scott, I had a quick question about truncated domes and ADA compliance at street corners. I've worked a lot with ADA in the past and at one point I was being provided information that truncated domes are required, but then another point I was being told that the state did not require truncated domes. Then again, you know, I did read this, you know, from different sources online and you can find online that Elvis and Mill Monroe are living together on an island somewhere, so I don't believe everything I read online. Can you please, whether you have the information available now, if not, you know, maybe send the board a memo if truncated domes are going to be, are required on these corners or not?
Truncated domes are currently required. If you, if you walk around the village, you'll see some of the older ADA ramps have the cast-in-place concrete. It's like a red, red concrete with the raised balls, which are the truncated domes. When those first came out, the design standards for those weren't the best and you'll see a lot of those have deteriorated. Now we put in a composite plastic in place of that cast-in-place concrete that really, they're really a lot more durable than what was, what was there before and they can be removed and replaced if necessary without replacing the concrete. Yeah, yeah, the color as well. There has to be a contrasting color from the, from the existing concrete. The village has chosen red for our detectable warnings. I've seen yellow, blue, other colors in different villages. The next annual program is our traffic and speed data collection program. We have roughly 100 locations that we monitor on an annual basis and do a traffic study there. That includes most of our, all of our arterial roads and a lot of our major subdivision streets. We also work hand in hand with the police department on any special traffic studies they require. A lot of times, resident concerns get addressed to the police department first regarding speeding and then we work hand in hand with them to give them the data that we can provide them regarding speed and traffic counts. We also have a bridge inspection program. We have 14 bridges within the village. Each one is inspected on a roughly 24 to 48 month timeframe, depending on the condition of the bridge. Some get inspected a little bit more frequently if they're a little older. These are all inspected per FHWA guidelines and then the reports are provided to IDOT to be included in the national database. We're fortunate that most of our bridges in town are in good condition and really don't see any major expenditures for the bridges, except for the next one here.
Excuse me, Mr. Threewitt. You received special certification in order to inspect bridges, didn't you?
Yes, to be, to inspect bridges in the state of Illinois and actually nationally, you need to be, let's say, a certified bridge inspector. You need to be a professional engineer and also complete a, what's a two-week training course and then also a yearly updates on education.
It really has provided a special service for us that we don't have to contract out and it took a lot of effort on your part. Great, thanks for being there.
Don't you have a bridge of your own?
Yes.
Huh? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Thanks to Mr. Persons. I had mentioned that there is one bridge in town that its condition is a little worse than others and that's the Indian Boundary Bridge. This is just north of the Creekside subdivision. Currently, the bridge is in, I'm going to say bridge, it's, you know, a couple of pipe culverts, but in IDOT's world, it is considered a bridge. And being a bridge, it is eligible for replacement funding. The village secured roughly $1.2 million to replace this bridge. So we're going to be moving forward with that project this upcoming year and we're going to plan on hopefully constructing it in 2018. With that, it would be a, it would be an improvement over the pipe culverts there and we'd also extend the roadway resurfacing to Creekside Drive, which is the next major street to the north.
One question, Scott. There are four pipes underneath Pilcher Road or 135th Street. Is that one of the 14 bridges?
That is one of the 14 bridges, yep. That is.
Good shape as far as I know, but I was just curious.
Yeah.
Never really thought of it as a bridge.
Yeah, yeah. Randy mentioned, I was just out there on Friday completing the, the bridge inspection for that structure. Obviously, if there's any roadway widening in the future, that structure would, wouldn't be able to accommodate that, but it seems to serve the purpose at this point. Next few slides, and then I'll conclude here. These are just a, kind of a snapshot on our current roadway network. We have a wide variety of roadway conditions. We have roads that are 20 years old, we have roads that are 50 years old, and we have roads that are two years old. And they all, they all, they all rate differently. Currently, on a scale of zero to 100, there's a pavement condition index. Overall, the village's roadways rate an 80, which is very good. We're lucky enough to have a lot of the village's, at least subdivision streets and some of the arterial roads built by developers back in, you know, 10, 15 years ago. So they're, most of them are in relatively good shape still. The downfall to that is they're all built at the same time, so they're all going to degrade at the same time. So we're trying to get, get ahead of things here and, you know, take care of some of the, take care of some of the roadways now so we don't have the bubble burst on us in future years.
Do you have a slide for the, what does it say there, square yards? Do you have any idea how many roughly miles of pavement we're responsible for in town?
Yeah, it's approximately 400 lane miles.
Thank you.
Now that you got, well, you have the next chart up momentarily. I'm really curious about the fact that we have so much all of a sudden in the 39 to 10 range, which based on what we heard way back when they did this earlier study, that's pretty bad shape. There better be something done quickly. Are those part of the program for this coming year?
Yeah, it is part of the, it's part of the, we'll say, the 2016 to 2018 road program. Definitely a lot of the roads that rate in that 39 to 10 category will be addressed. Some of those have been addressed. Some of the roads out west, Walker, Wheeler, just by the very nature... by the very nature of them, being tar and chip roads, they don't rate the best. Does that mean that they warrant a replacement? Not necessarily. But also on that list, 127th Street is a major project in that 39 to 10 category that we're, that we will address. And Tara had spoke to that earlier. I believe that, that one falls into 39 to 10.
Just to add to that, these are numbers as of December 2014. So we do need to update from what we've done this year and that'll change the number slightly. And as far as next year's budget is concerned, we'd like to bring back IMS, the vendor that did the initial survey next year and reevaluate the roads.
Yeah, I think that, that survey was tremendous and gave us a lot of good data. I was just surprised by the, the sudden, you know, in 2011, almost insignificant in that category, boom, they're going to go right back down, which means we're working on it. But I never, when we did the original study, we really didn't talk about anything being that low. Well, obviously not from, look at the chart. So I was just surprised to see so much. But Scott's correct about things that we hadn't, may not be that critical, but they just don't fit the criteria. So, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
As Randy mentioned, we do plan on having the, the vendor IMS come out next year and reevaluate the roads. They have a, a complex machine that comes out here and does the evaluation. Since 2011, we've been updating the, the program manually with all our improvements. But, you know, it really artificially ages the road and the program based on computer algorithms. They, they should be fairly, fairly close, but, you know, until you do the real rating, you don't know for sure. But based on our visual observations, we think the ratings are, are fairly close.
Actually, an improvement from 79 to 80 overall on average. So, that's good.
The last, the last slide I have here is just a, a visual of some of the maintenance strategies we employ typically for a roadway. Given the, given the pavement condition index number, we'll look at either grinding and overlay, which would be taking off the existing asphalt surface, which would be between an inch and a half and two inches and just putting on new asphalt. If there's, generally if there's more patching involved, we'll, we'll look at a heater scarification, which actually heats up the, the existing materials left on the road, heated up, needed with additional asphalt oil, and then put back down. And then we'll, we'll resurface on top of that. And that actually saves us from doing significant patching within, within subdivisions. If it's just, you know, an isolated patch here and there, we have a patching program we'll do where we'll just patch subdivisions as far as, as opposed to doing a curb-to-curb resurfacing type project. And that's, that's all I have with the slides. We did bring a couple exhibits here that were included in the board packet. And we have them up near the wall in Village Hall here. One is the road program, which we anticipate from, for 2016 to 2018. And the other one is just the individual map showing the, the roadway pavement condition index numbers. With that, that concludes.
Just a quick comment on the maps. They're good, but unfortunately, some of the colors are pretty similar. And it's very difficult to tell, you know, light blue from darker blue, that sort of thing. And there's a.
Yeah, we can.
Bed ratings. Just consider, what we get is pretty small. I'm hoping what's over there is a little more easily read.
It's a little bit easier to read than the 11 by 17 that was included in the, in the board packet. And we can also look at doing some different patterns for the colors to make them stand out a little bit more.
Well, and another possible option maybe to have two different charts, maybe use three colors that are pretty clearly defined. And one chart is, you know, the ones that's good, the ones, the others that are bad. And then it's pretty obvious, because one of the things I was looking at is, you know, where are the bad ones? And that was part of the reason for my question earlier. And if it's a separate chart that showed the lowest end and the color rated, three colors we can handle, six colors, you don't get enough definition, I don't think.
If we expand the limits for each individual gradation on there, we can decrease the amount of colors.
Something to keep in mind because it's a very good tool, especially if you're trying to explain to people where things are. But you need to be able to explain it quickly rather than, I got to study this before I explain to somebody. So.
Yeah, the other, the other option is we can, you know, we have atlases for all our water and sewer. We can create an atlas. It's a multi-page booklet that has the streets in a, you know, in a smaller version.
Let me quickly just wrap up this portion of staff's presentation. And of course, we'll take any questions, suggestions. And this will be an open topic for many months, so there's still time to make comments. You'll see there are two worksheets within the packet. These are projections of, related to projects that have been expressed support for in the past. They give five-year projections. I have to commend the mayor and the board on doing the heavy lifting and making sure that these programs are funded properly. Some of those items in the past came from efficiencies that we've gained through operations and whether it's the police department, streets, water and sewer, and things like that, which did free up funds too as well. And just the movement of the village. And, and we can see it through the financial statements. And Tracy can attest to this too as well. The village is growing and we're growing in commercial development. Connection fees are coming in. Route 30 has huge potential. And we've had some great partnerships through some of these grant funding sources. You can see in these columns where we have grants, federal grants lined up through IDOT and the FHWA and other agencies too as well. So it's kind of exciting because we went through a process where we were doing roadway resurfacing and have been for many, many years. But seven years ago, we were trying to wrap up the existing projects that we had. And the only big projects that moved forward had big grants. So for instance, Steiner Road moved forward because it had a $2 million grant. Route 59 moved forward because it was an IDOT project and a partnership. And Route 30 continues to move forward. Now we're headed into that next phase where we actually have a little more money to start talking about some bigger projects. So we're excited to see 127th Street starting to come to fruition. It does have a big grant attached to it, fortunately too as well. So we're proud of that. But that's going to be a really great project for the village. And there'll be more bigger scale projects in the future too as well. So with that, I'm not going to go through every single item on this list because we've pretty much touched on these items through the presentation. We projected out some numbers for the future. These are draft numbers too as well. We're pretty confident in the funding, grant funding sources that they've already been approved, or they have some really good potential for the future. Phase one is the initial engineering. Phase two is the design engineering where the project gets to be shovel-ready. Phase three is the actual construction. And those are the construction costs that are listed on the first sheet. On the second sheet is the maintenance program. And the maintenance program for resurfacing is intended to be funded at a, at approximately $2 million. This would be $1 million through the capital, another million through the MFT program. And that's what Mr. Threewood had mentioned as far as the five-year plan with the roadways. We'll continue to evaluate the condition and adjust the list as necessary. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the sheets here. Keep in mind that they are draft numbers and we'll get some more concrete numbers as the budget develops. And in the future, you'll have presentations from all the other departments, including, we'll circle back to Public Works and talk about streets, water and sewer as well in the future. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or take suggestions too as well.
Couple of questions if I may. 143rd Street's my number one priority because that's, that will make a huge difference on some of the traffic problems throughout town. I noticed phase two is expected to be done next year. Then there's a gap before we would implement it. If money were available, is it truly shovel-ready at the end of next year?
It, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge as far, well, not necessarily a challenge. We have had discussions with IDOT as far as partnering related to property acquisition. And that's important and they seem interested. So that's a big hurdle right there. Commonwealth Edison will be another big hurdle too as well because we need to come to terms with what is the value and how do we coexist together in that property? So we'll be bringing that back to the board here in the spring. And those are some of the key pieces. I think as far as the design is concerned, that, that, that'll move along quickly. And then the last piece, of course, we did talk about it and we've talked about it with Congressman Holgren about funding for this through the federal government. And we've talked to IDOT because they would administer the federal funding most likely for this project. And we have a lot of people on board. So we're.
I just recommend we keep a high priority on cleaning up things that we can clean up. So if a miracle happens and the money becomes available, I agree with the mayor, nobody's got any money right now to do anything. But it may suddenly show up and I'd just like to make sure we take advantage of it. So if we can push ComEd and acquisition, let's keep pushing that so that it's as ready as we can make it. So the money becomes available, we can move ahead. The other question I have is more of a, how you forecast. If you did everything right in today's dollars, is this the way it's forecasted or do we escalate the, the dollar declines with time? And are we reflecting that in the numbers? So these are truly 2018 numbers and 2020 numbers or whatever? Or are they really current dollars projected in a, in a future year?
I wouldn't term it as an escalation in, in the cost. We did that for the pavement management because it's a prediction on, based on material costs. But there is a safety factor that's provided in there too as well. So we know that construction costs most likely will increase. And we've included that too as well. Project scope can change though and that can increase a project too as well. So it, it is a draft list and it'll have to be updated every five years.
I will continue to review it. I'm just curious what kind of safety factors you built in, which I hope you did and you sounds like you did. So good. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. I'm not going to repeat everything trustee Lamb just said about 143rd, but I second all of his comments and wholeheartedly agree on prioritizing that project. That's all. Thank you.
I just have a, a couple of comments. One is on the traffic data collection program. I don't know if we could look at or consider maybe expanding it or reviewing it in a way that might be applicable, that we could utilize for attraction of retail development and people that are looking. So in other words, when a retailer comes to town, a big thing they're looking at is not only the demographics, the income, those kinds of things, but traffic counts. Updated traffic counts are very important to a lot of those retailers as well. Whether it's turning traffic, whether it's just north, south, different directions, east, west. Not sure if our program will allow that, but just a comment to see if, if it's possible. Maybe just adding a few things might be helpful. That's all. Second point was, in reviewing the spreadsheet, we talked a lot about the bicycle and pedestrian, some of the projects. Were some of those on that list and some of them not on that list? Or do I just need to dig deeper to find them all on that spreadsheet? The pedestrian and bicycle?
Yeah, there's, there's a, this, this list is intended to provide a summary and highlight the high-level projects. So there are several other projects that Mr. Threewood had mentioned that are in the general curb, sidewalk, and bike path improvement, capital improvement plan. And so those are active projects. Yes.
Thank you.
And more specifically, we'll get through the capital project budget as we evolve through the program. You'll hear it again through strategic planning on Sa, on Saturday. You will see the audit results Monday night at the board meeting. And that will kickstart the budget process. What you'll see on that first page of the big spreadsheet, that, that current projects is the more primary focus, more secured funding mechanisms that the village has for projects that have already started or have grant funding available. The future projects are things that staff feels that we need to continue working through. May not have solidified the outside funding sources, but we are working on things such as engineering to move the projects forward. And again, as Alan stated, the last page has our maintenance programs. You'll see that through the budget documents. It should dovetail right through the titles of these projects. We'll come in continuous with the budget document itself. So from what I'm hearing, we've taken the notes on what we need to look at as far as any specific project-related issues that we might need to incorporate with the document. If there's anything that you see throughout the process that we need to look at, we can investigate it and talk about it again on Saturday as well and the next few months.
Yeah, well done. Nice, nice summary.
Thank you everyone for your time this evening. And this discussion will continue. We welcome public comments too as well. So if there are any members of the public that have questions, concerns, suggestions, things like that, we welcome that too as well. So thank you for the mayor and the board and the time this evening.
Reminders?
As been said numerous times, October 3rd is our strategic planning from 8 till 1 at Public Works. At Public Works, not here. October 5th will be our next village board meeting. And our next committee of the whole will be on October the 12th.
Taking motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.